Dean, please let me remind everyone who is going to address the board tonight to sign in on the clipboard on the table and make sure your microphones are turned on and speak clearly into them. By way of an announcement, our next planning board meeting will be November 3rd at 7:00 PM in the Matthew Thornton Room. It looks like we ought to be able to give you a spot for Mike tonight, right? So we'll get you voting. That'll give us six voting members, which is a quorum. And with that, Planning and Zoning Administrator's report. Jillian, do you have anything to announce?
Yes, our new assistant planner will be starting October 30th. His name is Robert Price. He's been an assistant planner in Raymond for the past seven to eight years, brings some good experience, and we're excited to welcome him to Merrimack.
Excellent. Congratulations to you and Tim for filling out the staff and to him for getting the position. Look forward to meeting him. Yeah. Any other items?
That was all.
Okay. Any comments or questions from members of the board for the staff? Seeing none, let's move to item three on the agenda, which is Pennechuck Waterworks, Incorporated as the applicant and Southwood Corporation as the owner. Review for consideration of final approval of an application for a two-lot subdivision. The parcels located at 16 Daniel Webster Highway and Manchester Street in I-1 Industrial, Aquifer Conservation Districts and 100-year and 500-year flood hazard area. Tax map 1D Lot 1. Jillian, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
It's a fairly straightforward subdivision application. They're proposing to subdivide the existing lot into two parcels for the purpose of constructing a new 35,000, 45 square foot water distribution facility. And you'll notice that the next-gen item is site plan review as well.
Thank you, Jillian. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jim Petropolis for the record.
Jim, I don't think your mic's on or it's not close to you.
Green light is on. Jim Petropolis, Hayner Swanson, 3 Congress Street in Ashaw, New Hampshire. And with me tonight is Don Ware. Don is the Chief Operating Officer of Pennechuck Corporation. And we're here for both cases, I believe, three and four. And what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you, I will tell a little, present the facts of the subdivision, talk a little bit about the main body of the property, and answer any questions. Don may want to answer questions. And that kind of will set us up for the next site plan on case number four, if that's okay.
Terrific, thank you. Please proceed.
Great. So this property is map 1D Lot 1. It is an 85.5 acre property located in the I-1 industrial zone. And as you can see, it's a unique-shaped property. We have frontage on Daniel Webster Highway here to actually the east. We're boarded by State of New Hampshire property and the Harris Pond Drive, Harris Pond Retail condominium project. Vinnie Russo moved from Hudson to Merrimack, apparently.
You didn't know that?
And it caught me off guard there.
We gave him a job.
The property also along the northern border is Bowers Landing Project. And then, of course, Manchester Street, we have frontage on, and here in Cove is across the way. And of course, to the south is Harris Pond Supply Pond and the Pennechuck Treatment Plant.
It was a cash deal with the player to be named later.
It was a trade, yeah. You'll also notice on the drawing, this shaded area, this is the restricted buffer upon the property for Supply Pond and Harris Pond. Currently, there's some elements on the site. There's a cell tower located near Daniel Webster Highway, set back a couple hundred feet with the treatment plant here. This used to be Concord Street. You see this kind of arcing piece of cart road here that exists. But there's also a water main in that, and that's a 24-inch water main that leads up and actually services Ian Heiser Bush. And there's actually a drain line from Harris Pond draining down towards Pennechuck Burke. Pennechuck Burke borders our property in the southeast corner of the site. Currently, it's a wooded site. It has varying topography throughout the site, but in general, things kind of flow in grade towards the south. There's about 40 feet of grade change across the property. The site is located in the Merrimack Aquifer Conservation District. What this plan proposes to do simply is, out of this 85 acres, is right here along the frontage on Daniel Webster Highway is to create out a 7.591 acre, to be known as Lot 1-5. That's the lot that case number four will be the subject of. The remaining parcel will remain, is about 78 acres, and it will remain in its current condition for now. These plans do comply with your town regs. The conditions that Jillian has outlined in her staff report are fine, and we would seek your approval at this point.
Thank you, Jim. Does the board have any questions before we take up whether the application's complete and ready for review? Nelson?
Just a couple. One, the access, proposed access to this Lot 1-5 looks like it's via an easement across Lot 1. Is that correct? Are you planning to access Route Daniel Webster Highway?
Daniel Webster Highway.
You are planning to access directly from Daniel Webster Highway, right there? So it'll be a curb cut and a...
DOT approval, yeah.
DOT, yeah. Okay, I was curious about that. And that's all for now.
Be happy to go into that detail on the site plan, Nelson.
Okay, we'll talk, okay. Talk some more.
Thanks. Any other questions? What's the will of the board with respect to, do you mean the application complete?
Chairman, I make a motion that we consider this application as complete for, so we can consider it.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Desire, fault. If there's no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
I said aye.
Oh, didn't hear you. Okay, so that is 7-0-0 to accept the application as complete. Are there any waivers that you're requesting, Jim, that are necessary?
We're not. Tim kind of raised the old sidewalk question, whether we need one for subdivision or not. I've requested one for sidewalk under our site plan. I did want to bring it forth because Tim kind of asked us during the review process about it. We're not proposing any sidewalk on Daniel Webster Highway.
I would propose that that discussion belongs under the site plan rather than subdivision.
It seems fair to me to consider that, although that's only going to bring Lot 1-5 into the discussion of a sidewalk and would leave Lot 1 without any consideration with or without.
Yeah.
But if that's the will of the board to put that off for the second part of our process, I'm okay with that as well. Any objection to anybody doing that? Okay, so does the board have any further questions of the applicant on the substance of the subdivision plan? Are there any abudders or interested citizens who wish to weigh in? Seeing that there are none, open and close a public hearing very quickly. What's the will of the board with respect to final disposition of the proposal?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant final, conditional final approval, are subject to the notes issued by the memo of Mr. Timothy Thompson dated October 9th, 2015.
Is there a second for Alastair's motion? Nelson? Nelson, second it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0 for that. That brings us to item four on agenda, which is, again, Pennechuck Waterworks, Inc. as the applicant and Southwood Corporation as the owner. Review for consideration of final approval of an application for site plan review to construct a 35,000, 45 square foot water distribution facility. The parcels located at 16 Daniel Webster Highway and Manchester Street in the I-1 Industrial Aquifer Conservation Districts in 100 and 500-year flood hazard areas. Tax map 1D Lot 1. Jillian, is there anything that we should know about this piece of the puzzle before we hear from the applicant?
This is also a fairly straightforward site plan application, and I'll let Jim explain the rest.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Being a new case, I'll reintroduce myself as Jim Petropolis, Hayner Swanson, 3 Congress Street. With me tonight is Donald Ware, Chief Operating Officer of PennCorp, and thank you for the subdivision approval. Now that we have Lot 1D 1-5, you'll notice it in a slightly larger scale. Again, we have frontage on Daniel Webster Highway. And what is being proposed here tonight is an application to construct a one-story, 35,000 square foot distribution building for Pennechuck Waterworks. As background, and I think it's in the staff report as well, Pennechuck Waterworks' current facility is located at 4 Water Street in Ashaw. Built in 1966, they had 11,000 customers at the time. They now have 55,000 customers being serviced out of that building. So the time is right for more space to operate, a newer building, and actually bringing this site up to what is becoming a kind of a campus here for Pennechuck with the treatment plant just across the Burke in Ashaw. So I'd like to talk about a couple key elements to the site plan. Again, as I mentioned, the building, one-story, about 35,000 feet. It will contain offices in the front portion. It will contain equipment storage, vehicle storage, inventory of parts, and repair rooms. Now, there's drive-through doors on the elevation in the front as well in the back, so that vehicles can enter in and enter out of the building as such. Initially, the building will house anywhere from 35 to 40 employees. The normal hours of operation will be about 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. However, during a water main crisis, this facility goes into operation. It goes into mode. If they have a water main break, people meet here, they get their assignments, they get their materials, and they go fix the break. So here's an example of a normal day at the facility. Employees will arrive between 6:30 and 7:00 in the morning. About three-quarters of them will enter into service vehicles and leave for their assignments for the day. The remaining 25% or about seven or eight people will remain at the facility the entire day. Field employees return from their service assignments between 2:30 and 3:00, and they leave the facility around 3:30 to 4:00. There might be several people remaining until 4:30 to 5:00, 6:30. Access to the site is gained off of Daniel Webster Highway. When we first looked at this property, we looked at coming in off to the north using Harris Pond Drive. It was a much longer driveway. We took a meeting with the state. We have no restrictions about access from the state, and they thought it was okay. We performed a traffic study. We looked at things like site distance. We looked at things like, is a left turn pocket warranted? And none of those things were needed. So we're very close to a DOT permit, which is needed really to perfect this site plan. And it gives us, it gives us some good independence here for this particular facility. It'll be a two-lane entrance, entrance in, exit out. We are widening right at the end here. We've got, that's considerable a part of our driveway is in the right-of-way. We wanted to give a little right turn pocket. It helps with some of the larger Pennechuck vehicles, but if somebody wants to make a left turn, it doesn't back up traffic. This driveway runs about 400 feet because it climbs a pretty good grade. There's about 20 feet of grade change that will climb up till we get to our development pad here. Being a secure facility, Pennechuck has a gated sliding gate right here in which employees will have access, electronic key pass, but all visitors need to stop, check in with the facility in order to gain access to the site. Parking is about 45 spaces located south of the building. North of the building, you'll see on the building elevation in a minute, we've got an overhanging canopy here to store Pennechuck vehicles on the exterior. And this is the area right here where they're going to store their earth materials, their sand bedding, their pipe, their crushed stone elements right here for their project. These aren't big quantities of material, but they're during emergencies and during breaks that they have that material available to them. With regard to utilities, again, we've got a water main on site we're tapping into, Pennechuck Water. Gas is located in DW Highway we're bringing up, as is telephone and electric in overhead, and I will talk about that as we have a waiver for that this evening. Sanitary sewer is not available to this parcel. We're proposing a very small septic system located right here in the front, just for sanitary flow only for these 35 to 40 people. If you're asking or thinking about floor drains and wash bays, well, we don't want that in the septic system, so that'll all be piped to a holding tank in the back, an underground holding tank, 5,000 gallons. We'll get a vehicle to come in here periodically, about every three weeks or so, to haul that material away. Stormwater, we've got a good story to tell with stormwater. First off, we've done a number of test pits and borings in this property, and it's all beautiful sandy soil. We're looking to capture our post-development runoff in three stormwater areas, two small ones along the south part of the entrance drive, and then a bigger one in the back that'll capture the roof and the main body of the site. We've got sediment four bays to kind of allow for that initial filtration, but then really recharge is what we're promoting here for this site. We performed a study, and the numbers pan out that there's really no increase in runoff coming off the site. Everything is coming down towards this very 250-foot wooded area to Pennechuck Burke, so by capturing and treating there, we feel we're being responsible with our stormwater. We did submit a traffic report with our application, Mr. Chairman, prepared by TEC. It's a very low generator of traffic this use, about 30 trips in the morning, AM peak, 46 in the PM peak, about 150, 155 trips per day. TEC did look at a left turn lane here in Daniel Webster Highway. We've got wide lanes. We've got some pretty good shoulders there. There was no warrant needed for a left turn pocket. Site distance is good, looking up and down that stretch of road. Quickly, a couple other quick items. Site lighting will be illuminating the access road in the site, full cutoff luminaires, LED lighting, downcast lighting. Plans have been prepared in accordance with your regulations. I do want to show the architecture. This plan prepared by H.L. Turner, we've got a flat roof over the office portion. This is the view here that you'd look up as you drive up the office portion to the left. We've got a flat roof here, and then the pitch roof, the higher bay pitch roof for the vehicle storage and maintenance areas. You can see that canopy I talked about. We will put vehicles outside and give them some partial cover. The exterior's going to be a combination of masonry block and metal panel. And, Don, I hope you use those same colors. I like those colors. Construction schedule, Mr. Chairman, if we're successful this evening, we would probably break ground. I would think sometime late winter of 2016. It's about an eight-month construction schedule, so about this time next year, Pennechuck could be operating this facility. Other permits, we've got a positive recommendation on folder from Merrimack Conservation Commission. There's standard conditions about green snow pro and also responsible pesticides and fertilizers. Our alteration of terrain, our septic and our curb cut permit, we're right on the brink of obtaining those approvals. This application does carry with it a waiver letter, Mr. Chairman, and our company submitted that letter on October 8th as part of the planning board application. And if it's okay with you, I'll quickly paraphrase the letter rather than read it word for word. The first item we're requesting for a waiver is your 705-D19 requiring sidewalks along our frontage. We're requesting a waiver of that, not to construct sidewalk along our frontage. There is no sidewalk on our side of the street. The nearest sidewalk is approximately 1,000 feet to the south in Ashaw. The site's a little bit unique in that we're set quite a ways back from Daniel Webster Highway. We don't look to, we don't look to encourage any walkers. There'll be no walkers into our site. And then, of course, with the treatment plant located in Ashaw right over here, there's the old Concord Street here, this wonderful path and arched bridge that Pennechuck will be able to walk to and fro between the campus. So, and then lastly, of course, New Hampshire DOT is the right-of-way, and they will not allow sidewalks out on that right-of-way, just for a short stretch. So for those reasons, we're seeking relief, a waiver. Waiver number two, in your regulation, 705-D20C, right here at the right-of-way line, you want a maximum of 36 feet of driveway width. We've got 39 feet. The reason we're in that transition from two lanes to trying to open it up a little bit for that right turn lane to come out, exceed your regulation by three feet. We'd like relief for that. Waiver number three is your requirement under 4.15 for underground utilities. We're requesting a waiver of that. Overhead utilities exist all up and along Daniel Webster Highway. We're proposing several poles to climb up to this location here and then run into the proposed building. Requiring underground service would be a significant expense to the client, but one of the unique things about this, we think because this building is set so far back and because it's relatively steep here, we think passer-bys here aren't really going to see much of this site. Their sight line is going to project probably over and above the facility, so...
Explain to me a little bit about the cost of it, because if you're talking about sandy soils and all of that, it would seem to be pretty easy to bury a line up the driveway while you're going, especially since you're going to do, and you're doing water there as well.
Sure. Usually, usually when you talk power with development teams and developers and things, they have to spend the cost to construct the conduit, you know, about 700 feet, but then they've got to pull the wire, and that can get really expensive with public service. Overhead utilities, I believe, and Don, correct me if I'm wrong, but overhead utilities, they will set the pole and they will set the wires at really no expense to the developer. So when you look at all Leonide costs, you know, significant obviously is a subjective word, but it's, you know, it's in the thousands, tens of thousands, actually, the difference between the overhead and the underground for a run of that size. And then lastly, Mr. Chairman, your regulations 1001-3 ask for landscaping along the frontage. And as I said, we've got kind of a unique area here. If you've seen it, there's kind of a steep bank along Daniel Webster Highway on the west side, and we're going to notch into that bank, so our notch driveway will come up the hill, and then we'll have side slopes, three-to-one side slopes on the side. And they're not really conducive to any type of significant plant materials. Oddly enough, there's no sign here that Pennechuck is keeping a rather low profile, so we've asked for, we've asked for a landscaping waiver so that we don't have to plant the sides of that bank. They'll be loamed and seeded, obviously, and through here. That concludes our remarks. Both Don and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Jim. Other questions that the board has before we take up the question of completeness? Desiree?
I have a few questions for the site. We'll start with the waiver one, because it's most recently talked about. Number four, you're saying no landscaping, and you've got three-to-one slopes. What stops erosion on there?
Yeah, we'll blanket it once the loam gets down, so that it's got a matting there, so that once the seed comes up, it'll at least hold it in place.
So it'll be wildflowers, shrubs?
Yeah, it's a conservation mix. It'll be a knee-high mix. It won't really be mowed. It won't be golf course-looking. It'll be kind of a, you know, kind of a fescue-y type of look in which the driveway will kind of meander up through that.
Some other questions have to do with the exterior of the building. You have, how long is the building? The longest length of it? I didn't see a dimension on there. I was trying to find it.
It's 290 feet from the right-hand side of the building to the left-hand side of the building.
Okay. And on the face, that is the office portion with the flat roof, there are, the one above that one, the longest elevation that you're looking at?
It's like a window.
That's all one continuous length of elevation? Our regulations are no more than 200 feet, and you have to start introducing some jogs in there of a minimum of two feet?
You had to break up the slab side.
Desiree, this elevation here along this side?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. There's a little match out for doors, they don't count?
No, it needs to be two foot, two foot, like actual full. If you built some kind of like structure around that, that would be justified. I mean, you can argue that, but I think there's, I don't have the book with me right this second, but I know that it's like a certain length for that 200. It has to be, like, if you broke it up, I don't know, one or two. I'm guessing that main entrance is the first one, and the far corner, that's the main entrance, and...
Yes.
I do note that you guys have overhangs on there, and it's clever, the shading on there makes it look like it has some depth to the building.
We're clever guys.
Overall, I'm all right with the look of the building, but I would recommend breaking it up some along that frontage. And then the only other comment that I, or the question, are you going to put any building-mounted lighting on?
I believe so, yes. I believe so.
Okay.
Whether for security purposes or, especially behind the building, yeah.
Okay.
You've got a lighting plan here. Does the lighting plan include...
It shows the style of wall now.
Yeah. Looks like three or four down the long side, and maybe one...
The underside of the canopy for the main storage of vehicles will be illuminated. And then there's three on the south elevation. I think that's the one you were talking about. There's three here, and there's a couple in the back, one in the back as well, so yeah.
Jim, it's 1204B if you're looking at it. No uninterrupted length of any facade, let's see, 50 horizontal feet.
Alastair, could you repeat that number?
1204B.
Okay.
I think it's 1204.2B.
Sorry, is it two? I've got 1B, sorry, 1B. I've got, oh, well, maybe two as well, yeah. Yeah, same thing.
Thanks for looking that up.
It's 12B. You're quite right, Madam. Yeah, thank you.
Let's come back to that in a second. I want to pause the substantive discussion and deal with the question of completeness and whether we're accepting the application.
I'd like to make a motion.
Alastair, Desiree makes the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the application as substantially complete.
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 Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0 to accept it as complete. Let's open the floor for any abudders or citizens who wish to weigh in. Close that, takes care of the public hearing. Four waiver requests, what's the will of the board with respect to the waivers? You have questions about them?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I do.
Whoever one you want to take up first.
Start over there, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I want to go back to the landscaping one.
Okay.
Because I think, I think we would like some landscaping. It doesn't have to be bushes. It doesn't have to be shrubbery, but at least ground cover, a decent ground cover, as you pointed out, Desiree, something there to hold erosion on that bank and make it look attractive as an entrance to your site. In conjunction with that, I want to also talk about that, your pedestrian use of that bridge. That bridge has always fascinated me. You can see it from Route 3. And I don't see any attempt here to make a pathway. In fact, it looks to me like you've got part of the drainage swale cutting off the pathway that was there on Page, let's see, 5 on 17. And maybe there's another page that has some detail of that walkway, but you referred to a walkway. I don't see...
Well, let me probably address that. There's no intent for us to walk back and forth. It's a pretty healthy walk. If there is communication between the two, it'll generally be by vehicle, and we will be pulling out into the highway and coming back.
So are you incorporating that bridge into your, it isn't really on the site plan?
No, it's not part of, again, the plan. This is really a standalone building. There's not a lot of communications. Probably the biggest thing that we get here is instead of two T1 lines to feed communications and information back and forth from there to the office, there will just be one line that'll be shared between the two facilities. Other than that, again, you know, typically, the employees are two different ones. Our water supply group, which is down at the treatment plant, this is our distribution group. They have very little to do with one another operationally.
Okay.
Nelson, help me know which bridge you're talking about. Where is this?
Well, it doesn't really show on here. I was looking at Page 5.
Where would it be?
Shows on 1, Page 1 of 17, toward the lower center, left of center.
I got you.
Yes, there it is, existing bridge. Is that a masonry bridge? Is that...
Stone arch.
Stone arch, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah. Of course, it's off-site, so I guess we can't expect too much of it, but I think it's something worth preserving, is what I wanted to...
Yeah, there's a, oh, we are. There's no, there's no plan to disrupt it at all.
Yeah.
You know, there's a pathway here from the Harris Pond entrance. As you know, there's the access drive that leads down to the cell tower, and that, we are just about at grade with our road crossing that, and then this will remain as it currently does today. Don's probably right, there's not going to be a lot of action, activity between the two for work-wise, but if somebody was having lunch there and wanted to walk down, they could certainly do so. There's nothing to prevent that.
Okay. It looks like there's some grade changes along that old roadway.
Sure.
If you look at Page 5... If you look at page five.
Sure.
And so, there won't be accessible.
Right through here is where the road will come.
Yeah.
And there's a little bit of grade change there.
Get a, a...
If you wanted us to stone-dose something up on both sides, temp, you know, stone-dose something, Nelson, just to allow for foot traffic to get through that point, we could certainly do that.
Well, I was more worried about disturbing the grade to the point where you couldn't use it.
Well, we're going to have to disturb the grade to get the road in. That's priority one. What I'm saying is, from the road, we'll, we'll make a connection back to the path on both sides.
Okay. I'll, I'll settle for that, even though it doesn't show here on this...
No, I know it doesn't show.
Oh, okay. You, you, you...
Forced me into it, and I'm happy to do it.
I can ask no more.
No, you can ask.
Sounds good. Now, talk a little bit about the landscaping, because Nelson was looking for something, I guess, more than the grass that you were talking about.
Yeah, there is ground cover there. I guess I'll defer to that.
I mean, we could go to a wildflower mix. Probably one of the things, when you drive past here and you're going 40 miles an hour, this is a 90-degree entrance up through the woods in a steep grade.
Yeah.
It, one, you will never see that building. The building, because the grade actually tops off and comes down a little, and so you're not going to see the building. So, it would be the entrance, and obviously, we're as concerned about erosion as the next folks are. So, the intent was to put a mirror mat netting on there and to seed it, and then let it go wild. If the preference is to put wildflowers in there similar to what a DOT does in areas, we wouldn't have any objections to that. Anything else that you would try to put on there, again, given the three-to-one slope, as likely as it gets bigger to just tip, you know, tip over and, and get damaged. Like I said, there really isn't, probably that slope going from south to north on the left-hand side, you know, people's eyes may be drawn to that driveway. They'll see that slope up ahead of them on the left, and behind it is all woods. That's, you know, we're making a cut basically through the woods with that driveway. We kind of took that little dog leg to the right and then dog leg back to the left, so that visually, the cut in the trees, like I said, if you look up through here...
Got to take a microphone with you. There's one over here that you can walk around with. Sorry about that. Folks at home can't hear without that.
So, the way this, this comes up in here, again, you can see that the tree line right follows right along in here, and then it courses along in here, and the intent was, again, to take this area here and establish that, what Jim had indicated, use the erosion control netting, and then to seed that, and then let it come back natural. And again, if, if the preference is to put in some sort of a wildflower seed, we'd be fine with that. But we do not intend, you know, we don't want to be putting equipment or people up there trying to mow or maintain that.
No, and I think you're trying to be as inconspicuous as you can with just that there's anything back there at all, which is, I guess, as aesthetically pleasing as anything, to make it look like...
Correct.
Undisturbed, yeah.
I, I just figured the bank was all going to be cut, and I didn't want to just leave it to the schumak, which is what's growing there now, and other scruffy-looking things.
Okay. Is there going to be any signage leading into the site?
There's no proposed signage now.
Surely that, is that not against the requirements of the fire department? I thought they required signage to indicate where to come in event of a fire.
We'll comply with all the fire requirements.
Hmm?
We will, we'll comply with all the fire requirements for, for signage, if they need one.
But not a big sign, but surely, I think that the fire department normally likes a little sign with a street number or something.
Okay.
But it's with the fire department. Talk to them, and they'll tell you what they want.
Okay. It's probably one of the conditions of approval, anyway. In the middle. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I've got two or three, Mr. Chairman. Jim, as you go up the access road, on the north side, you've got a stub sitting out at about just before the, where your gate's going to be. What's the stub doing?
Well, in case somebody erroneously comes up this drive, they see the security gate, and they're a curious seeker, and they say, geez, how do I get out of here? I'm giving away just a backup, and, and back, and then drive down the driveway.
Okay.
They're going to put the IEDs.
And then, obviously, when we come to waivers, I'm not buying your waiver number three. I mean, we have people all the way along GW Highway who faced with overhead wires, but we don't want them to put in, we want underground services, and I take the same point that the chairman made, that if you're digging up to produce a street, to produce gas from the, down the bottom, I don't believe it's, I hear what you say, but I'm not buying it. I think you're, we, we should, we would be wrong to allow you to do away with underground utilities, but that's my personal view, and I feel quite strongly about it.
Just, just one point of reference, about $35,000 extra to put in the underground power, just to put it into perspective, because you cannot put it in the same trench as the gas.
I know.
You cannot put it in the same trench as the water. It's a totally separate trench. And again, we're trying to be fiscally wise here. Obviously, we'll do what we have to do, but visually, you will not see that, again, as you come along there. So, if it's an issue of visual, nobody's going to see overhead or underground.
It's not, to me, it's not an issue of visual. To me, it's the fact that we have this regulation, because overhead power lines, we are trying to bury them as much as we can, and I don't care whether I see them or I don't see them. I believe we have a regulation that they should be underground, and I would stand firm to that regulation, and I'm sorry if it does cost you a bit more money. My opinion. My colleagues may not support me.
What's that?
My colleagues here may not support me, but I'm saying personally, I think you should not have that waiver.
I think, um...
I would be, I would be one not to support Alistair in this, in this particular, on this particular item, because I think they're out of sight, and they're mostly on his site, and it's not something that would be visually annoying to me personally, so I, I, I would not agree with Alistair's position on that.
I think another point weighing on the idea of buried power lines is the surrounding properties are essentially assured not to be developed for any consumer or residential use, based on who owns it now, the state, and Pennechuck, and all of that. So, it, it will all, it will be one of those things for which the public has no reference or contact. Vinnie, did you have a...
I did. I was going to weigh in on the same thing. I will... I'm going to support Alistair and Chairman Best as well on the underground utilities.
I'm not sure we were agreeing with each other.
I know, I know. I thought, I thought you had brought it up, and I apologize. I'm definitely on board with Alistair, because one of, and I just had this discussion the other day. We, you drive down the street, you see all the power lines, you see all the tree work you see, and there's just a matter of some sort of reliability, that when these lines are underground, they're somewhat better protected, in the event of some sort of something going on. It just seems to make more sense to me. The, the regulation is there, and I don't think you guys have made a good case to, to put them underground. I mean, you're looking for some waivers to the landscaping as well. I just think that, at this point, you guys can, you can work with the underground utilities.
But related to what Vinnie just said, we're talking about putting underground utilities on your driveway to your facility, and as far as reliability, storms, wind, rain, ice, anything else, if you want part of that facility, you're going to take care of keeping those lines clear, so that you're not going to have an issue. So, I'm, I'm against Alistair on this. I think there's no problem with doing, and, and it's not going to be visible. This is a one, one-shot deal. There's nothing else coming off of these places, so I have no problem with, with waiving the underground utilities.
I think, I appreciate Vinnie's comment about reliability, and I do think that underground power lines are more reliable. However, I'm usually applying that kind of a notion or a concept when reliability matters to, to a, a bank of homes, or, you know, a bit of the street, and in this case, the only one that's affected by the reliability of their power line will be them...
That's my point.
...themselves, and, and if that ends up being a challenge to them...
Mr. Chairman, my thinking is not just for that. My thinking is, if you open a door, somebody else is going to put a foot in it, and that's exactly where I'm coming from. I just think you are creating an exception which somebody else will use against us.
Well, perhaps so, but every waiver that we ever issue is the same. But anyway, I don't, we don't have to hash it out. We can just, you know, get, get to the point of considering the waivers and see how that thing shakes out. Other than the landscape, the sidewalk, the utilities, what was the fourth thing that you wanted to waiver for?
The width of the property line, Mr. Chairman. The driveway width, 36 feet, we're proposing 39 feet.
I wouldn't have any difficulty at all supporting that waiver. I don't know if anybody else has a thought or opinion. Desiree?
Yeah, DOT is sure, like, all right with it. I don't think we see an issue with us.
They're actually encouraging the right turn lane, so...
So, it would help your case for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, let's take care of some of these waivers. Let's take the driveway width one first. Is there a motion? Nelson?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we waiver the requirement of the driveway width limitation at 36 feet.
Based on which of the...
Because, because the specific circumstances relative to this site plan indicate that the waiver would properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Is there a second for Nelson's motion? Second by Desiree? Any discussion? All in favor of granting the waiver, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0 to grant the driveway width waiver. Let's treat the, let's take up the landscape waiver, and Jim, there's been a little bit of discussion about what you were willing to do and all of that. I just want to make sure that we're all clear on the record as to what you're willing to do, so we know what you're asking us to waive. So, we, initially, we were talking about stabilizing the slopes with the matting and then planting a relatively wild form of grass and letting it be, and then perhaps, instead of grass, doing a wildflower mix, but not trees or shrubs, or anything like that.
Correct.
Now, what does our regulation typically require from landscape, Jillian?
This particular section was for mostly focusing on trees.
For what? I'm sorry.
Mostly focusing on trees. I can read the...
The section requires, for the amount of frontage, four trees that we plant...
Yeah, you'd have to put in four.
Along the frontage. And again, as we're, we're notching through our driveway, the three-on-one slopes don't make any sense for, for deciduous trees.
You said that was essentially wooded today?
It is up and down, right? And it, and the outer border will remain wooded, so we've got this 150 feet of swath that we're cutting initially for the driveway and the clearing.
What's there now?
You would see woods up along, you would see the banking along the DOT with some grass cover, and then you would see woods at about the right-of-way line. It's a wooded site.
So, scrub trees or whatever, there are some trees along that line that it will, they will remain after the project?
Certainly, you know, when you look at, when you look at the overall plan, where we have...
We chase you down with the microphone again.
...over 1,000 feet of frontage, you know, all of that will remain along the driveway. Correct. Oh, I'm sorry.
Jim, well, we would require trees based on our guidelines. What is there now?
Trees.
Trees, it's a wooded area.
Trees, okay, so...
I'm not sure if the board would consider whether a waiver is even necessary if there's already wood, woods there, and you're going to leave them there. You're going to clear, obviously, where the driveway goes, but...
Correct. That's the area. Where we're clearing for our driveway, I believe the code says you need, the code, I believe, says you need...
Still not on. Yeah, your microphone's not quite there.
The code says you need some planting across, into there, so...
It speaks to a landscaped fronted strip not less than 10 feet in width, and then goes on about the number of trees that are needed. And then landscaped strips may be mulched or planted with hardy ground cover plant varieties or aslawn areas.
Based on the, the width of your frontage and the slope, I mean, your, your slope is either driveway, I'm sorry, your frontage is either slope or driveway. There's not an in-between. So, the trees have to go for the duration of the property in front. The only way to change this would have been that that, that parcel had to be wider on the front line, but that's already approved now. So, I'm, I'm in favor of it, as long as we do something to do the blanket to prevent erosion further, and then the trees that are beyond it on either side are all going to stay, so it's just going to be a little cut, as small as can be, in the least disturbance to create this facility along the streetscape, so I'm, I'm for it.
I don't, I don't think we need a waiver based on that.
Jillian?
We might need a waiver on the trees.
I think we do, because of the trees.
Yeah. We can waiver just the trees.
We could.
Yeah, we could.
So, I would make a motion to waive the requirement for trees, for tree planting.
I'll second that.
Because of the peculiar nature, the peculiar topography, the specific circumstances of the site plan, and that strict application would, would not be contrary, waiving this requirement would not be...
We got you.
We indicate that a waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations. The second one is what I was trying to be...
Seconded by Ms. Christiansen. Is there any discussion on this waiver? All in favor of granting the waiver requirement for trees, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0 for trees. Let's take up sidewalks. What's the will of the board or questions with respect to sidewalks?
I make a motion that we grant a waiver for sidewalks, based on the specific circumstances, wait. Yeah, specific circum, the second one, relative to the site plan, or conditions of the land, and such a site plan indicate that the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations, mainly on the fact that we can't develop sidewalks along the front of that property, because it's DOT, and it's a small section, and we don't have a master plan.
I agree with all of that. Is there a second for Desiree's motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mahan. Any other discussion on the sidewalk waiver? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0 for the sidewalk waiver. Now, the underground utilities waiver, is there more discussion that the board wishes to have with the applicant? Is there a motion?
Also a move that we waive the requirement for underground utilities, based on the specific circumstances relative to the site plan. No, strictly conforming would pose an unnecessary...
Get your microphone.
Strictly conforming would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and the waiver would not carry, not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Is there a second for Lynn's motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mahan. Any other discussion? All in favor of granting the waiver, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? One, two opposed. Mr. Russo, Mr. Milne's opposed. So, that is 5-2-0 to grant that waiver. That dispatches the requested four waivers for the applicant. What's the will of the board with respect to final approval?
Mr. Chairman, could I have one other query before we actually vote on it? If we look at the various maps which we've been kindly given, there's a reference to the cell tower, and I know this isn't really your problem, Jim, but I, I want to catch it before we lose it. There is a reference to the cell towers belonging to Omni Point, sitting there. Now, I recall going back in the realms of history, that we have an understanding that that we have an understanding that all cell towers, we have documentation for them and we also, and this is really more to the staff. Not only do we have documentation for them, we're supposed to have a piece, a sum of money so that we can bring the damn thing down if nobody else wants it. Now, I know that's going back to the predecessor, your predecessor, and actually Tim's predecessor. So although I'm not knocking the project on it, can I ask that somebody does the research? Because that tower and its location and the bonded amount for bringing it down should be on the record somewhere. Does anybody else remember me on that one?
I think your recollection is correct. I would agree with what you said.
This is in before, this is Tim's predecessor. We went into this with.
You're just asking for some research.
I'd like the research to be carried out to make certain that is documented because it doesn't affect you, but it.
Unrelated to this application.
It's not related, but I'd want it done. Okay.
We'll take care of it.
Bless you.
Good girl.
So there's, there's a seventy-foot tower lease is what's noted on the plan and it says no record found. Did anyone look at the registry of deeds? I mean, because a seven-year or longer lease has to be recorded in the registry of deeds.
But not only that, there's, we demanded or required that the owner of the tower had to put a bond with the town.
I believe we're gonna do some research on this and come back to us.
Yeah, okay, I'll shut up.
Yeah, I get the research. The only reason for offering up the registry is to start to find that first thread that you can pull on to figure out the rest of the puzzle. Because if there's no file, where do you go from there? And there may not be a, at the registry if it's five-year automatically renewing for infinity because they'll avoid the recording requirement, but.
I'm familiar with some of these type of things.
Yes, encountered them from time to time. So what's the will of the board with respect to final disposition?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I don't mean to prolong anything. In fact, nobody wants to have this thing go through quicker than me. But Desiree brought up a point about the south elevation. And I just wanna be bulletproof. She, the requirement is that for long expanses, long runs of building that there be a two-foot jog of breakup. We think we've got recessed doors. I don't know if that qualifies. I'm not an architect. If it doesn't, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to submit a verbal waiver request of that section because nobody in the public is never gonna see that building elevation from Daniel Webster Highway.
At the moment.
At the moment.
Well, that section of the building doesn't face Daniel Webster Highway.
Correct.
It faces.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to address a comment that Desiree brought up. It was in my notes. I don't wanna leave here with her thinking we've gotta have a two-foot jog on that elevation.
No, it's, it's an important one to bring up because it was in my mind to think that we add that as a condition of approval if it's a requirement that you haven't asked to be waived. It would have been something that we would have added to the list that's in the staff's memo. What's the will of the board with respect to either questions for the applicant about such a waiver? Or any potential motion for such a waiver? Jillian, you had something on your mind I could?
I think Tim and I's opinions that they had met the regulation with what they've got. I'm not sure that the waivers needed. But that's just our opinion.
Generally speaking, it's been our custom to defer to such interpretations by the planning and zoning administrator that they've met a regulation.
Adding, adding a dormer overhang to those?
They have them.
Do they have, I don't see them on those.
Here, if you look at, if you look at the elevation, what you're seeing is the shadow from the overhang. That's why it looks like it has a breakup. They've, they've rendered it with a shadow on. So there's little overhangs over all of those doors.
I'm just thinking higher.
Yeah, there, there are two parts just showing how the architecture is laid out. Those doors.
I'm looking, I'm looking at the white and then there's a darker gray and then a lighter gray. And if that dormer intersected in that darker gray, that would break up that whole line. Not that you have to do it, but that would be a nice thing to do.
I believe it runs the whole length because they're trying to shield from the south sun coming in those windows during the summer.
There's an extended canopy here along this elevation. If you're looking down that side of the building, that runs, you're losing, we're probably losing it in the, in the elevation because we're looking at a face on, but it runs this entire length right there. It's a vertical element that sticks out from the building.
That's a, that's a, that's a horizontal.
Yes.
And I'm thinking breakup is a vertical.
Oh, okay.
So if that dormer extended through that somehow, even if it's just a facia, that would break up that long line. Now, not that you have to do it, that would just improve it visually. And I'm not gonna make it a condition.
We'll certainly take it under consideration.
It looks like from the drawing, the elevation that I have in my packet, that, that bit of cover over the doorways and the glass part of the office on the front doesn't run the full side of the building. It kinda stops around the corner and then there's a little bit over the door, a little bit over the door. What's the will of the board with respect to either holding their feet to the fire on the requirement or considering their request for a waiver?
I know I'm the one that said it first, but we just basically said, hey, you know, this, we're not gonna really be able to see anything with your power lines and this is as much or more into their own site and buried back there. So I'm not, I'm not really gonna hold them to it on it because you've got, you have awnings covering the entrances. So at least for occupant comfort, you've got something over the top of each one of those doors. So the building's long. It's, it's hidden, it's back, it's not on the street side.
It's gated.
Yeah. I'm not concerned with it.
Zero chance it ever changes hands.
But I still think it's, you know.
Nelson?
Yeah, I was gonna concur with Desiree on that point that it is out of sight, completely and gated from the public view and not something that we would have to look at. So I have no real desire to enforce an aesthetic requirement on something that's back there in the woods.
So is there, many of you have a comment?
Well, what I'm hearing from the board members is everybody's talking about a waiver for this, but what I heard, well, they're talking about granting some sort of relief from this requirement.
I think, I think they're meeting the requirement of the regulations now. So I don't think they need a waiver.
Jillian has, has indicated that the staff's impression is that they meet the regulation and they don't require a waiver. And then I offered that it's usually our habit to defer to those determinations by staff because she's the planning and zoning administrator.
Well, and I guess that's where I was going, was the fact that they've already made that determination. It seems to me like this discussion, I don't think we need to worry about.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly consider granting a waiver as a matter of boot and suspend, a belt and suspenders. But typically, even if we disagreed with Jillian, the zoning board would be the place to have such a disagreement, not the planning board, so.
I don't like, I don't like the appearance of belt and suspenders.
No?
No.
Don't like that. All right.
I don't think we need.
I tend to agree that no actions required by the board based on this and that they're not required to do anything other than what they proposed to do. Without objection, that brings us to the point of considering what to do as a final disposition to the proposal.
Can I make a motion?
You can.
I would like to make a motion that we grant condition of final approval to the application with the following precedent conditions as stated in the memo to be fulfilled within six months prior to plan signing otherwise, unless otherwise specified.
Is there a second for Desiree's motion?
Yeah, I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
I think Lynn got the second out first. Did you get a second out?
Oh, sure.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I actually heard one. I didn't mean to make up one because I had two real ones over. Okay, we're still gonna give Lynn credit for the second on that. If there's no other discussion, all in favor of granting conditional final approval as per the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks very much indeed.
Good presentation. Good job. Okay. Item number five on our agenda is the John J. Flatley Company as the applicant and owner review for consideration of final approval of amendments to the previously granted mixed-use conditional use permit approved by the planning board on September first, 2015. The parcels are located at six forty-five, six seventy-three, six eighty-five, seven oh three and seven oh seven DW Highway in the I-1 Industrial, Aquifer Conservation and Wellhead Protection Districts, tax map six E, lot three one, three three, three four, three five and three six. And as has been my custom for this particular applicant, I am going to recuse myself as my law firm has done some work for the Flatley Company in the past. Yeah? And with that, I'm also going to excuse myself from the rest of the meeting and leave you in the capable hands of our secretary to finish out the minutes. Let me turn over, what's that? Yeah, yeah, you go. You're all set. Now, I'm gonna watch the Cubs.
Okay, folks. Kevin, the floor is yours when you're ready.
I'm on, there we go. For the record, my name's Kevin Walker from the John Flatley Company. We're here tonight to discuss an amendment to the conditional use permit that was previously granted by the board. At our last discussion, we had spoken about a couple of the conditions within the conditional use permit. On top of that discussion, we had discussed the fiscal impact study that was done for the site and whether or not the construction of the apartments would be a positive fiscal impact, negative fiscal impact. So I think what I'd like to do is start with the fiscal impact and then I'll move over to the amendments to the conditional use permit. And this may be a bit long-winded, but I think it covers everything that was previously discussed and was of possible concern with the board. And hopefully this puts the board at ease with hopefully a positive decision. So I will start with the fiscal impact portion. Fiscal impact study was done by Mark Fugere of Fugere Planning and Development. The determination based on the overall site was a net positive fiscal impact for the entire site. The board had asked that I take that report and break it down to see what would happen if only the apartments were built. What would be the impact? Would there be a positive impact, negative impact? Would be kind of a moot point, no benefit to anyone. So I did. I broke through, I broke through that report and analyzed all the data in it. And the fiscal benefits, there'll be a complete fiscal impact total. These are the benefits, I will also give the costs. The benefits of the construction occupation of the five apartment buildings is a total of six hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. That includes property taxes, motor vehicle taxes and a very small amount of ambulance revenue. By small, it's under five thousand dollars, but I wanted to include it as a, as a total. The fiscal costs that would be generated by the construction of the apartment buildings is just under a hundred and four, under a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. A hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. And that includes the hiring of one school teacher, a portion of a police hire, a portion of a fire department hire. And that's how I did that number. The percent of calls to the fire department based on the overall site and the apartments within that site, the police calls are expected to be about eighteen point five percent. Fire department calls, a little over forty percent. So based on that, the construction occupation of the five apartment buildings is a positive impact of five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Now, based on the fire department being forty-one percent, let's say the town hires a fireman, just outright, the net impact, again, would be positive, it would be five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And although I don't think it's at all necessary based on the numbers that were presented, but if the town were to decide to hire one police officer and one fire department personnel, the net positive impact would be four hundred and fifteen thousand, fifty-five dollars. So in all cases, there's a pretty beneficial positive impact fiscally and a substantial number as well. So if, again, the fiscal impact study points out that in all likelihood, aside from the teacher and one fire department personnel, the two police officers would need to be hired once the site is built out, we're willing to say maybe they hire a police officer now. It's probably not necessary. And as the future of the site goes, possibly another police officer is hired. So again, based on what I, what I deem as the worst-case scenario, and that being the town hiring one fire department personnel, one police department personnel, teacher, there's still a positive impact of over four hundred thousand dollars. So in that regard, I think it's pretty clear that the construction and occupation of the apartments would be a net overall positive impact. Switching gears, I guess, now to the amended development agreement.
Kevin, can I ask a question?
Sure.
How does that compare to your Terra Heights?
The, the positive, the positive impact? I, I would think it's about similar. I didn't take a look at the fiscal.
I mean, you're, you're touting this as very similar to Terra Heights in development and the population being similar. So I'm curious as to how that compares to Terra Heights.
The, the population at Terra Heights is actually quite a bit more. We've got eight times forty-eight, three eighty-four, five hundred and sixty-four apartment units.
So twice.
So it's, it's, yeah, a little more than twice, about two and a half times the size. And there are, there are definitely positive impacts that were, that the city of Nashua has had. There's been not only improvement to their infrastructure, which is also gonna be going on with this development.
So similar fiscal impact.
I would, yes, similar fiscal impact.
That's all.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. I guess, are there any more questions on that that we wanna talk about before I get to?
Everybody happy with that so far?
Oh, wait a minute.
Tom?
If we hire one firefighter, we gotta hire three more. For staffing, you just can't.
You can't just hire one.
Just can't hire one.
They come in groups of four.
This is, again, this is based on a necessity based on the number of fire calls per.
Understand, it, it's not an easy comparison to make, okay? I'm just saying that if we hire one, we gotta hire, we really have to hire. It, it's beneficial for us to hire four because of scheduling issues and shift issues and those sorts of things.
You can hire one police officer, you can't hire one firefighter.
You can hire one teacher. But when you hire, you know, because they run four shifts, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a four-person move. Crew, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, again, you know, looking at these numbers, the construction of the apartments, I don't think would, would warrant a hire, but I'm just basing it on a, on a projection.
Tom, do you wanna take it any further than that or are you just making a comment?
I'm just making the comment, okay? That that's typically how it happens.
Right.
Okay? And there may be other circumstances that would require us to do that anyway.
Right. Right, I was gonna say, there's probably, you know, other developments or convergence that are going on that would help contribute to, you know, a hiring of another staff, whether it's fire or police or, or a teacher.
Yeah, well, we're gonna get into that in about two months during our budget process. Okay.
Okay, Kevin, then continue on to the next, to what you, how you want to amend the agreement.
All right, we, we discussed last time a couple of things with the development agreement. The changes that I proposed, and I believe you have in your packet, include a couple of minor things. There's a change to amended development agreement, the date. The biggest change is the phasing portion, and it's number two in the phasing portion. It's been reworded slightly. And the changes are, the first part is the non-residential commercial portion now reads "non-residential or commercial construction, including buildings and/or commercial parking facilities." As you know, the homestead restaurant is in need of excess parking. That parking will be built on this property. It's clearly a commercial use. It's clearly in the public's best interest so they're not crossing the street to, to rent their cars. And I really think that that holds enough water to allow the board to confidently allow the construction of the fifth apartment building. However, we've gone through the overall design and what we've added to the plan is the clubhouse area towards the front is not going to be a clubhouse. It's gonna be about half clubhouse and half of it is gonna be a commercial leasing office. And that's gonna be a commercial leasing office to start anyway for the apartments. And down the road, as, as things progress, it, it may be a mix. I'm not gonna say definitely, but it may be a mix between the apartments and the commercial properties. Where it's right on-site, it'll be easy for the employees to walk perspective, either, either purchases of property or, or leasers through the site, take a look at different areas and whatnot.
What employees?
The employees of the leasing office.
How many would you expect to be there?
Guess, well, we've got, I think, five in Nashua.
So more than double the space. How many employees would you expect to be here for this facility?
I wouldn't be surprised if it was the same.
Okay.
I mean, this is a large, obviously, large site with a lot of future construction that's gonna be occurring on the site.
But at least initially related to the residential?
Right, initially it would be residential, and hopefully as we have more people drawn into the site, they'll be able to show the different areas of the site, plans and so on.
If you were building commercial space on the site, then they would be related to leasing the commercial space, but you're not planning on doing that immediately?
Not immediately, no. So, again, so to me, there are two commercial aspects now to this plan. One is a commercial leasing office, which is clearly a commercial use. The other is commercial parking. Now, yes, it's not a huge parking garage, and it's not a 200-car parking lot, but it is a parking lot for a commercial use that would greatly benefit the Homestead Restaurant as well as the people that don't have to cross DW Highway anymore. The second part of the second phase of the development agreement regarding construction of vehicular and pedestrian connections, and this is something we had discussed last time, and it's one of the reasons we're here tonight also, is there was a thought that the road from the St. Gobain parking entrance all the way to the apartments would be needed. That's 3,300 feet, and I think that's when we all were thinking, well, that wasn't really intent of that portion of that regulation, because that would make the site, you know, economically, it would be tough to do. But more so, you know, with the conditional use permit plan, those buildings are shown in a general location with a general square footage and a general use. If somebody wants to come in with a bigger building or a couple of smaller buildings, that alignment of that roadway is gonna change, which would be shown on a definitive submission, definitive site plan submission to the board. So that's one reason that we're asking for that section of the language to be changed. So it basically says a residential or commercial connection, if applicable. So if there's something close by, you know, the leasing office would obviously be connected to it, but if there's something that should be, could be, is economically feasible to connect and will not affect the overall layout of the site, sure, that makes sense. But making sense from St. Gobain to the apartment site at this point, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And again, the apartments are in that section of the property to begin a transition from the single-family homes on Lantern Lane to eventually the retail and industrial to the far north. Provides a little bit of a buffer there. Another change, and I'll just bring it up quickly, in the previous plan, the closest corner of the apartment buildings was 96 feet away from the property line, which means zoning, there's not an issue with that. The revised plans, the closest corner is 148 feet, so we've actually bumped that buffer out 50 feet. So it provides a greater buffer to the neighbors to the south. And I guess just to touch on it a bit, I did mention in our last hearing, we did revise the walking trail. We didn't get permission from the Conservation Commission to traverse that wetland area. And we'll obviously go forward with the proper permitting on that and move forward on that. So I guess in summary, we've provided the additional commercial parking area for the Homestead Restaurant. Again, the structure in the front of the site, the far southeast, is gonna be part clubhouse and part leasing, and that leasing to start at the beginning anyway would be for the apartment buildings. So I think the concerns of the board with not having something definitively commercial, even though I believe that our initial discussion was that the parking satisfied a commercial requirement, I still believe that it does. But I think the addition of a commercial leasing facility on the site really hammers a point home that not only is there one commercial use, there are two commercial uses on the site. I don't know if the board has any additional comments.
Well, thank you for that, Kevin. Now, let's throw the thing to the members of the board. Would anybody like to comment, make any thoughts? Express whether you agree with what Kevin has presented, bearing in mind what you also said at the last meeting, which is when this came up, or last time Kevin was here when this came up. Please, anybody wants to make any contributions? Desiree?
Yeah. I believe I heard your opening argument, your discussion about the commercial office, that it wasn't gonna be commercial at first, it's just gonna be for the residents, and then it'll switch to commercial.
What we had originally proposed was simply a clubhouse. After further discussion, it was decided that that's gonna be a clubhouse in part of this facility, and the other half is gonna be a leasing office with locked doors that residents cannot access. Only the people that are employed there will have access to that area. So it'll be a completely separate area that is not accessible by residents to enter.
So you're intending to build that in this Phase One that you're proposing right now?
Yeah, and I think, I would say further, if it makes the board a little more comfortable, was, you know, no occupancy permit of the fifth building until the clubhouse is constructed. Just the clubhouse leasing facility is constructed. And that would hammer out the point that that fifth building cannot be occupied until that clubhouse leasing facility is in operation.
And the car park, of course.
Yes. And just to touch on that, we do have a signed lease agreement with the Homestead Restaurant that's really pending these hearings.
Desiree, do you want to continue, or Lynn, please?
As long as all we have built is residential, then that leasing space is residential leasing space, it's not commercial space. Until you actually build commercial space, then it really is not commercial space, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, it'll be used to showcase the site as people, you know, become interested in the site.
I understand, but it's functionally for the residents, as long as all you've got built is the residents.
Right.
What kind of progress have you made with enticing commercial use there, enticing potential commercial customers?
I did discuss this with one of our leasing agents this afternoon. I know that contact has been made with several companies. I know there are a couple more. One is a local brewery, one I believe does auto work. I believe that's two of the people he's been in touch with, don't hold me to that. But I know that we have the names of an automotive facility as well as a microbrew company. I will check with him tomorrow and see if...
Yeah, but we wouldn't want you to broadcast their names until you've signed bits of paper.
Right, right, right.
What you're trying to tell us is that you're making every effort in advance, even of constructing the residential sector, the two seduced people to come and develop their property, your property, or their business in your property.
The thought from the beginning is if we show a good residential stand of occupied buildings, that it will help draw businesses. And again, this is the same type of model that's worked in Nashua.
Lynn, do you want to add to it? Tom?
Yeah, I would just like to take issue with your assertion that you have a, this goes back, it's somewhat not related, but you do not have the Conservation Commission's approval for that change. What you've got from them is an assertion that they have no control over how that thing is, how that pathway was done, that that was a planning board issue, not a Conservation Commission issue, and that if it goes forward as being changed, they said, "Our preference would be that you do it this way."
Right, that's correct.
Okay? So that doesn't constitute, there was no approval from the Conservation Commission, formal approval from the Conservation Commission.
They backed the project, they backed the use of that with modifications to the bridge that crossed the wetland, and we'll have to go through the proper permitting. And we were not comfortable to go forward without their, I'm sorry, I'm using the word approval, but they're, I guess, them being in favor of it with whatever conditions they asked for. So while it wasn't a formal approval, they did eventually approve of that use through that area with certain conditions that we intend on abiding by. And while it wasn't a formal hearing, they did request certain things with that area, which we intend on doing.
Okay.
Does anybody else want to add anything? Nelson?
Well, the only thing I would add is I have a hard time counting the parking lot as a commercial equivalent to five units of housing. I just, it's just, it's just not quite the kind of commercial development that we...
Mixed use.
That we're, what?
It's not a mixed use.
Yeah, to make it a mixed use. It's, the restaurant has been approved and in place for a long time prior to this. So I'm just having difficulty with that, but...
And I understand. I think the majority of the board at the beginning was in favor of the commercial parking lot meeting the requirement, and then there seemed to be a little bit of uneasiness with that, which is why we revisited the structure in the front and wanted to make sure that we had an absolute commercial component to this, which, you know, is gonna be implemented with the leasing office.
And I think the other point that we have to bear in mind is that, and this comes back to a previous subject, I use the term "foot in the door," and that's what worries me, is that by effectively giving you the approval without, to do, to construct the fifth building without any proper commercial, as we understand "commercial," it's setting a precedent which could or might be used back against us in the future. But I'm only, I only reiterate that point because I think we all know where I'm talking about. Does anybody want to add any further comments? I'll throw the matter open to the general public, a public, I recognize that a member of the public would like to speak. You must sign in, Councilor Koenig, please. Let me say how nice it is to see you back with us, since you departed after the last election.
Hello, and thank you for having me here. I just wanted to add my comments, if I may. The, sitting on the board when this first came through and being somewhat hesitant to adopt the plan with four buildings going up before any commercial was created...
No, it's four are going up, it's the fifth building that cannot go up, and that's right, yeah.
So the fifth building wasn't gonna be, was being held out until some commercial element of this mixed-use development actually went forward. I find it very difficult to swallow the fact that a parking lot might qualify for that commercial, or, as in the case of, I just heard about the mixed use of the...
Clubhouse.
Clubhouse, thank you very much. My understanding would normally have been that this leasing office would have been part of one of the buildings, until that part of the building could be leased out, and then they would move out and close down and be done. And there would be a clubhouse, which was presented to the planning board as part of the plan, for the use of the residents, not half of a building. I'm not sure that he said he was gonna double the size of the building so that it kept the same size for the clubhouse people, it sounded like he was gonna cut it in half. So I'm very concerned that we're going down a slippery slope, that we were already on the edge of that slippery slope, we're gonna take a little step forward on that slippery slope, and we're gonna find ourselves where we are with Crosswood Paths or any of a number of other developments where they can't seem to fill the commercial, and they wanna turn it into residential, and things of that nature. So I would strongly encourage the board to very seriously think about not accepting this change. I also am very concerned about the decision to, even the thought of changing the routing. I felt it was very important that the housing be connected to the commercial so that they didn't have to go out to DW Highway and back in again in order to get over to the commercial that was being developed at the north end of the property. And if you're suggesting or talking about that being a fluid or a possible not existent pathway, I would, again, strongly encourage that we consider that. Because I think as a mixed use, there has to be some ability for the people in that mixed use to be able to share in that property, to be able to get to a restaurant, or get out to a store, or get to a whatever, without having to come out onto DW Highway and back again. I think adding that extra traffic is inappropriate. So I would urge you to be very careful and cautious in moving forward with this, and still look for some kind of indication that we're definitely gonna get a mixed use there instead of an empty space that might ultimately end up wanting to be turned into residential space because they can't find a commercial use or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you, there being now the member of the public. I'll close the public hearing. My tutelage is, I certainly don't like the idea of dividing the clubhouse into clubhouse and leasing office. I offer you a thought, and you may not like it, that you take the view of building something that is, acts as a leasing office, separate from the clubhouse, beyond where the car parking is, which you design or build in such a way that it might well be adapted to something once you, if you don't wanna use it as a leasing office in the future. I would like to see some other building. I do not like, and if called upon by somebody making a motion, I wouldn't be happy that you've given up half the clubhouse. Now, if you wanna build a building towards, further up towards the flat, the, yeah, the north end of the site, and I don't mean you've gotta go miles away, but somewhere, a separate building, which is clearly indicated in, you may only use part of it as your leasing office, but it is a building which could be used. I know you may say to me, "Well, we might endeavor use it for something." Well, okay, that's your hard luck, but if you want us to grant the fifth building, I would like to see a separate building which could be converted into a full commercial use. That's the only way, I might even consider whatever motion that somebody puts forward. I don't know what anybody else would like to comment on that, but that's certainly my tenpenny worth.
Our goal with the entire site is really to eventually interconnect it, including the road from the apartments that was mentioned earlier, as things get built out. And the other part of the goal is to be able to construct this economically and be able to construct it in a way that really puts a good positive spin on this section of town. We're dealing with 149 acres here. You know, so somebody could come in with a hot dog stand tomorrow and say it's a commercial use, "Thanks." We don't wanna do, we don't wanna do that. You know, we wanna be able to economically construct the site, at the same time not putting in a hot dog stand, to put in a hot dog stand.
I wasn't thinking of something as small as a hot dog stand.
Well, I know, but...
I think you have to understand that we are trying to help you recognizing the financial advantage of building all five residential buildings in one swoop, which is really what you're seeking to do. And I think you have to recognize that we have both history with other developments, and I'm not gonna name names, that constrain us from giving you wholeheartedly what you want. I'm trying to find some equitable halfway house so that you give us something that we can hang our hat on. Now, if you don't wanna give me a hat peg, then you know which way I'm gonna vote. That's my opinion. Lynn, I saw your hand.
Well, going to what Tom was saying, I'm trying to clarify, I see a roadway that comes from the St. Gobain entrance.
Yeah.
Along past the retail space that you've got listed there, past the big box store and into the residential site. When do you, when do you propose... When do you, when do you propose to build that, based on the original approval versus what you're proposing as a change?
I, I think as things, I...
I'm looking for what the change is going to do to that, that road.
I, I would think that when either this area, which may or may not be a big box, this area which is known as a restaurant, or anything that's built in this area, or this area, would probably, I think, what are we looking at? You know, I, I think, I think there's some leeway there, that I think we would be willing to put a connection from the apartments to whatever is in here, and possibly to anything that's in here, but I, I mean, I think this would make sense. I think if we go further than here, I, I think we're getting into a tough area again.
So what's the difference between the original approval you have, and the amended approval that you're proposing relative to that road?
Well, right now, the approval...
If we approve the change that you're asking for...
Yes.
What's it going to do to that road?
It will not require us to construct this road from here to here at this time. I definitely would be in agreement if the board were to say, from this portion down, because to build this, we're going to have to build this entrance. So there would be a connection through here, and that would make sense.
I'm okay with that.
But even, even this, you know, it's tough to see because this is such a big plan, but this road from here to here is 3,300 feet.
But Kevin, you've also said that you didn't really want to build that, and I'm, hopefully I'm quoting you correctly, you have said that you didn't want to even build that bit of the road because you didn't know if it was going to be one big box, or one bigger big box, or two slightly smaller big boxes. And as I understood you, you didn't even, you really wanted to stop there. Now, if you're saying to us you're prepared to do up to there, again, that's not what I've understood up to now. And so could you make it quite clear what you're saying you will do?
Sure, sure. Not, not a problem. The way, the way this is laid out, whether this ends up being a big box or a bunch of smaller boxes, this road is going to stay, period.
In which phase?
Phase, phase two, which gets you...
If it's something that the board is going to require...
The phase that you're building that, as soon as that gets built, you're saying you're going to build a connector to the residential?
Right, but I, we could do that, if that's, if that's the board's wish, it's something we can definitely entertain. The issue here is, where would, I guess, what is the board's wish if we were to construct this? To, to build it to here?
All right, I'm saying if you build this...
Right.
Then the road from here to here has to be built.
That's correct, yes.
If you built something here...
Be from here.
Then the road from here to here has to be built.
That's correct.
If you build something here or here, then I have no problem not doing that.
Right, yes, okay.
Does that make sense?
No.
No.
What, let's be very specific.
If you're building here, or you're building here, then what's going to happen with this road here? What are you proposing?
I think if the board would want it connected, we would entertain it.
So if you build something here, or you build something here, then the road from here all the way to here is going to be built? Is that what you're saying?
I, I think that could be done.
Okay.
If, if you do that, you put yourself in the same constraint of not, you didn't want to build the first section of road around the big box because you didn't know exactly the configuration for that, as well as the same for the retail space. As you're saying, if you do the retail space, you'd be kind of close to what you would be for the box, so you're, you're basically willing to commit to a road.
Well, if, if the, if the board, if it's something the board is, is really driven on connecting to the residential, and if we say build down in this area, and the board says, hey, we want it, you build here, we want a road from here to here, we'll do it. It's just going to limit the footprint of what can happen in here. Somebody wants to come in here with a funky-looking building, you know, sorry, we can't fit it in, that's what we're going to have to say. From here to here, I think is a no-brainer. That's not a problem. From here to here, not a problem. I think when we go north of here, it starts getting a little, a little dicey with what could be done here. If it, if I, if it were, you know, if I could do it the best way ever, you know, this would be the first thing built, do the connection, because nothing can really change in here. We've got a steep slope on this side, and this is all open, and whether it's a big box or a bunch of small boxes in the future, you know, that's, that road location really can't change. It's not a big deal. In here, you know, if somebody wanted to come in with something a little bit bigger, we could run this road down in this area, and make, maybe put something a little, little bigger, separate the parking, you know, all sorts of things. You know, I, I don't think we really have a problem with building the road. I don't think we want to handcuff the development of the site. Again, if the board is adamant that if we build something here, that you want this road to go in here, then we'll do it, but I'd just hate to see somebody come in with a building this size that they want sitting in here, and we've got a road sitting there. You know, we've put a lot of thought into the steps, the best steps to go forward as, as this development moves forward, and it's not that we're trying to get away from building this, that, or the other thing. We want it to make economic sense so, so things can get built, and we want it to make development sense. In the event that, you know, the, the four or five people in this little building say, you know, we'd like this out front, and this big guy wants to, maybe he wants to be over here. I don't even know how long this water tower is going to be here. Maybe, maybe that goes in the future, I don't know. I can tell you, St. Oban has no longer hooked up to that water tower. They've hooked into the water line here, and they've actually, what we had them do is bring their water line in right down this road. So this road, if you go up there, is actually cleared and open, not paved, obviously. Their water line comes in like this, and they have no more use for the water tower. That's going to remain up, but, you know, it's not needed by St. Oban. There may be a point in the future where it could come down, and something else could get developed there. The, you know, it's a moving target with what can be built there. And I, I want to stress, you know, I, I don't have too much of an issue with doing any sort of connection. I would just like to know definitively what's going where before we put a road in. I don't want to, I don't want to put you, it's not even a road, so per se, it's the drainage. Now we're ripping drainage up, or ripping a water line out of the ground and relocating it. So, it's nothing I'm trying to avoid, it's just something I would like to keep open so we can continue doing, you know, the best development plan that we can.
I understand that, I'm trying to get at the, there's a proposal here by you, that we change the second phase, and I'm asking, if we change this, what practical changes that makes to the plan? What can you now, now do that you couldn't do before, or now what can you not do that you could do before if we approve this proposed change on your part?
The biggest thing with the proposed change with the if-applicable, is it really leaves it up to the board. If, if you say, hey, we want a road from, you know...
Forget the if-applicable.
Well, that was, that's, that's, that's really the biggest part, because if the board finds, finds it...
Well, I'm, I'm looking at a lot of other wordage in here that's changed, Kevin. You've added including buildings and/or commercial parking facilities of the approved non-residential commercial development. There's a lot of words that have changed in there, including the if-applicable. And I'm asking, what, what does that now allow you to do, or not allow you to do, based on what the original was? Can we eliminate all of that wordage and just use if-applicable?
Excuse me, but what I'm, I'm reading here, Gillian's memo, and it gives the two sets of language, what's in there now and what's changed, and the if-applicable was there previously. If you look at paragraph two in Gillian's memo...
Right.
The if-applicable is there.
Right, that's why I'm asking about the other wordage that's changed.
The, the change is down in italics below it.
Yep.
And the only words that have changed that I could find was including buildings and/or commercial parking facilities.
And then at the bottom, of the approved non-residential commercial development has been added.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Right, and that's where, that's where I'd be, the if-applicable...
And that's what I'm asking, never mind the if-applicable, because that's in both, Kevin.
Yeah.
Right, but I added the approved non-residential commercial. So in other words, my, I guess my point was, if something is built down here, instead of having to build this from here to here, it, I'm, I'm saying, if the board, we don't have to do it unless the board finds it to be applicable in, in the town's best interest, in the development's best interest, to connect from here to here.
So as long as the if-applicable is here, which it is in the original, we can, we can do either one?
That's 100%, that's 100% right.
So you don't need the change that you're proposing?
Well, the, the wording before it says, it talks about the, the additional commercial and res, the commercial and non-residential development.
Yep.
And that's the change.
That's what I'm asking.
Right, so, so what I'm saying, what, what is meant by, by the wording there, is if this gets built, does the board find it applicable? Because before it was, if something gets built, we need to connect, period, and that's it.
Okay.
And now, all it's saying is, is if this is built, does the board find it really in the best interest of the site to build something from here, to build the roadway from here to here for the High Bay industrial building?
So that's the change, is if we leave it the way it is, if you build any commercial in there, you have to build the road regardless? But if we...
If the, if the board finds, if the board, if the board believes it's in the best interest of the site, it, it's really up, i- if we build that High Bay building way over to the north, does it really make sense to connect that to the residential? And that's, that's a question for you guys.
Then we, then we don't need the change, because if-applicable, if, if-applicable is there, then it's up to us to decide whether we need that road or not, and you don't need this proposed change.
I, I agree that the if-applicable is not, is, gets to the point of that. I think the big change in the wording here is the including buildings and/or commercial parking facilities, which allows them to build the fifth building with the homestead parking lease that they've mentioned.
That's what I'm asking.
That's the big change in the wording.
Yeah, that's one, that's one of the, the two changes, yes.
So if they build, all right, Gillian, let me ask you the question. If we approve this proposed change, what can they do with the change that they cannot do if we don't do this?
They can build the fifth building with the homestead parking lease in place.
Okay, that's, that's the bottom line.
That's our interpretation.
Well, and, and the leasing, and the leasing office.
Okay. So it has nothing to do with the road, yet you get the fifth building?
Yes. The quick answer is yes.
Not, not really, no, it, it, no, it does.
Kevin, that is, the answer is yes. What you are saying is, if you put in the, a leasing office, or subdivide the, the clubhouse into, into two bits, and you put in the homestead parking, if nothing else happened, you could still build and occupy the fifth building, fifth residential building. That is what you're seeking to do.
Right.
And you're seeking to amend the agreement, that was originally the agreement, to allow you that to count as a commercial development, which otherwise, you've got to get a, if we stick with what we've got before, you've got to stick with a commer, some commercial construction has got to take place before you can either build or at least occupy your fifth residential building. Am I not right? In principle?
Part, partially.
Please explain to me where I'm wrong then.
Well, you're, that part is 100% right, but again, the, the object of the applicable was including construction and pedestrian vehicular connections of non-residential development.
That's the...
Let's sweep, let's, let's just forget the road for a minute. The road is going to go in one way or another, we'll force, we'll, we'll require it to be built at some point. The real question of today's meeting, as I understand it in a nutshell, is you are asking us to amend the agreement so that by putting in the parking for the homestead, and cut, cutting the clubhouse into two, with a part of it being used as a leasing office, that gives you, without anything else happening, the right to put up the, and use, and lease out the fifth building. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's the bottom line.
Yes.
That's the bottom line. I wanted to get to the, that's the real issue. I mean, where the road goes, or what anything else goes, doesn't make a difference at this point, and I totally understand, you don't want to build a road until you have some idea what you're linking the road up to. That makes quite sense to me.
Right, that's a big part.
You're seeking to get the fifth residential building built and occupied solely on the basis of a car park and converting the clubhouse in half.
And so, yeah, a leasing office.
Yeah, yeah.
But also, seriously, a big part of it is not having to build the road from St. Oban to the apartments.
I understand that.
But that was never a condition of your first phase of approval.
No, it's...
So, so that's why, that's why we're having this discussion, is because, yes, we understand that the road will happen at some point, but that was never attached to any of this one through four buildings, or the fifth building, with that being connected.
No, but it is something that did come up at the last hearing.
Yeah.
There was discussion between...
He, he is correct, it did come up that way.
The roadway from St. Oban to the apartments, and, you know, 500 feet, I guess...
But the nub of the question is, the nub, the nub of the problem we are faced with is, can you put, build, and use, or lease out, the fifth residential building solely on the basis of a commercial car park for the homestead, and splitting the clubhouse into two, using part of it as a leasing office, probably primarily for residential, but possibly also using it as a bit of a sales office for trying to get the commercial development in?
Yes.
Thank you. You haven't answered my suggestion that you built, and I accept saying it might be a hot dog stand, which I, I wasn't really meaning that. I still think you could build something, somewhere, that was commercial, much closer to the residential, but you probably don't want to do that. I'm just, I just tossed that up as an idea, it didn't...
Are, are we talking maybe a separate clubhouse and a separate...
I don't like the idea of you giving up the half the clubhouse. I mean, that's, that's a given, I mean, I think you...
It is the same setup as, as Nashua, it's not anything that we're making up or trying to shove in there, it's Nashua.
I know, I've, I've been into the, I've actually visited the clubhouse at the Nashua...
At the, at the last meeting, we talked about, at the tail end of the meeting, taking this area right here...
Yes.
And putting a small commercial building that could house any number of things, not a huge one, not requiring a lot of parking, but in this area, which is separate from the residential, would be reasonable to do, doesn't require a lot of parking, doesn't require a lot of roadway as the rest of this would, that would give you, I hesitate to use the word, but, kind of like up north where they have one commercial building, now they didn't have a lot of luck renting it, and I, I don't like the fact that we're going to do that, but, but that puts you with a separate commercial building, totally and separate from the residential development. The clubhouse is the residential development. Now, whether you take and use part of it commercially, I don't consider that a commercial use. It's part of the residence.
Okay. But, which is really, Lynn has just sort of amplified what I was trying to say. I want to see something else built, other side of the, the main, that, that access road, which is, you can say it's commercial, you've got to remember, we've got to, we've got to look at the whole situation, and we're not just looking at your site, and you must not just...
I know, I know, I understand.
So, I want to see something, now if you're going to buy into what Lynn has just suggested, although I think Mr. May, I'm shaking his head, are you buying into that?
Yes.
Okay, will somebody like to make a motion? We've hammered this to death. Anybody want to further comment?
To do that, I don't think we need to change the approval.
Was there, and I don't have the original agreement with me.
I do, we've got them both here.
The...
I just want to make sure that, again, because it is a big part, I just want to make sure the roadway from St. Oban to the apartments is...
That was always if-applicable. We're not forcing you to build the whole road.
Okay, okay.
That was never the issue.
All right.
What we were seeking was something, a good faith...
Totally, totally separate from the residential.
A good faith demonstration of commercial intent. A good faith demonstration of commercial intent. So have you bought into that?
And if you do that, you don't need-
Then we don't need to change it.
The amendment to the, this.
Agreed 100%.
Okay.
Yes. I know, I know there's been a lot of back and forth, but I, you know, I appreciate getting it out and talking about it.
I think I would be happy if somebody made a formal motion to that effect, to, that we are, have agreed that a commercial building will be constructed to the north of the roadway access to the residential building.
I don't think we need a motion to that effect. I think we need a consensus that we agree that the fifth building cannot be built and occup, the fifth residential building cannot be built and occupied until there is a separate commercial building built somewhere separate from the residential area.
Right.
That sounded awful like a motion to me.
No, that's, that's what we have now.
I know that's what we have.
And I, I would, I would say I'd ask a consensus as to whether-
Tom?
Everybody agrees that that's what we're doing.
Oh, she's asking them to do is what they're supposed to do with a mixed use permit, or a mixed use approval.
And we're asking if we all agree with that.
Yes.
Given the undertaking we've received from Kevin tonight, is that a consensus? We all agree that that's what we want?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I just have a show of hands on that, please? I think that's, Jillian, do you want to make any comment?
So is there a motion to either approve or deny the amendments that are proposed?
No one's proposed one. There's no motion to propose one.
What we're saying, Jillian, I think, is that the amended thing is no longer needed.
Right. So the-
But unless we make a motion, there's nothing on the floor to approve or disapprove.
Okay, fair enough.
Jillian, would you prefer somebody to make a motion saying the amended thing is, is withdrawn?
I can just watch, how's that?
That works.
The, the applicant has withdrawn his amended thing.
His proposal.
That's his amended, amended proposal. Does that make everybody happy?
Yes.
Okay.
I understand now why Chairman Best recused himself.
Kevin, thanks for your patience.
No, thank you, I, I appreciate it.
Thank you for being patient. We're holding our hand all the way through.
Not a problem at all. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, we wish you well.
Have a good one.
Good night, thank you. After that, the next item on the agenda, which I think I've got here, is discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern. Has anybody got any action or items of concern? Nelson? No, it's a final approval of amendments. We're not amending. Can I say you're stopping at that point? Has anybody got any other items of concern? We move on now to approval of minutes. Oh, sorry, there's, is a gentleman in the back has appeared. Do you want to make some, a decision, sir? Any comment? I, I'm happy to hear that, to be honest. Let us take the minutes of October the 6th, 2015. Can I have a motion? Approved by Ms. Christiansen, second, moved by Ms. Christiansen and seconded by Nelson Disco. Now normally, the next item is my benefit, but in this circumstances? Oh, sorry, do you want to vote? Oh, yeah, vote on the, on the minutes? All those in favor of the minutes, as the motion of the minutes?
Aye.
Yes. Carried six.
And opposed?
Any opposed? Nil. Carried six, nil, nil. Motion for item eight. Lynn has made a, Lynn has made a motion to adjourn. Counselor May has seconded. Anybody want to take a vote on that one?
All in favor.
All in favor? Aye. Good night, thank you.
Foundation presentation, Cliff gives books to children in communities with certain parameters, and apparently the campers at the Merrimack Y met those parameters. They had, the Y had applied for this grant and just invited us because they were going to be talking about books and literacy and wanted to make sure the kids knew who the librarians were at the library and what kind of events and, and stuff we had going on.